All right, good evening. Welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of January 11th, 2022. Our meeting is called to order. Today, we're going to be voting on a selection of a new Vice Mayor, which is listed as Item 37 on the agenda. We're going to take that item out of order because there was another item added after that. So, Item 37 will be Item 38, but still be called 37. If I don't have you confused enough, you'll figure it out at the end of the meeting. Roll call. Everyone is present. If you'd take note of that, we're not going to need to take a roll call. Our next two items on our agenda are the invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation today is going to be delivered by Emily Conley from the Bahai Community. I believe Emily's sister is with her here tonight. If it's appropriate, gentlemen, if you're wearing a hat, if you'd remove it. If everyone would please stand for our invocation, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to our country. Emily?
Oh thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee. These hearts are radiant with thy love. These minds and spirits exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings. Oh God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees, even as it has aspired to material degrees, and render this just government victorious. Come from this reverberation to raise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to proclimate the most great peace, to become thereby the most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. Oh God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee, to thy bounty and bestow. Yabahalapa.
Thank you. If everyone will remain standing. Mr. Eldama, if you'd lead us in the pledge tonight.
Sir, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the approval of minutes. Consideration of the minutes from the December 14, 2021 Voting Meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the December 14, 2021 Voting Meeting minutes?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve the minutes of the December 14, 2021 Voting Meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from, is it Mr. Eldama?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Here's the ayes have it, do have it. That motion carries. We have no proclamations today, so we're going to go right on into it. Next item is Boards, Commissions, and Other Bodies. We will now move to make appointments to the Boards, Commissions, and Other Bodies. Ms. Bauer, would you please read Item 2, please?
Okay. Approve recommended appointments to Boards, Commissions, and Other Bodies.
Okay, any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Mr. Turner.
Uh, Mayor, I would like to make a motion regarding appointments to Boards, Commissions, and Other Bodies.
I would like to make a motion regarding appointments to Boards, Commissions, and Other Bodies. So, I move that we make the following appointments. To the Arts Commission, Nancy Lennox to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Darrell Barber to a term expiring January 31st, 2024, and as Chair for a term expiring January 31st, 2023. Lorraine Zomack to a term expiring January 31st, 2024, and as Vice Chair for a term expiring January 31st, 2023. To the Audit Committee, Councilmember Jamie Eldama as Chair for a term expiring January 31st, 2023. To the Aviation Advisory Commission, Terry Aramian for a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Bill Eskut to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Larry Robey to a term expiring January 31st, 2024, and to a term as Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. Quentin Tolby, the Honorable Quentin Tolby, to a term as Vice Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. To our Bond Committee, Sam McConnell to a term expiring 12/31/2022. Lisa Baker to a term as Chair expiring 1/31/2023. And Alicia Rubio to a term as Vice Chair expiring 1/31 of 2023. And for our Board of Adjustment, Brian Britton to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Kathy Cheshire to a term expiring January 31st, 2024, and to a term as Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. Tammy Ghee to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. And Benjamin Neber to a term as Vice Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. To our Citizens Transportation Oversight Commission, Mark Floyd to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Chris Sund to a term as Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. Paul Marsh to a term as Vice Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. To our Citizens Utility Advisory Commission, Robin Berryhill to a term expiring January 31st, 2024, and to a term as Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. Amber Ford to a term expiring January 31st, 2024, and to a term as Vice Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. To our Commission on Diverse Cultures, Nellie Andrade to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Ashor Chalmun to a term expiring 1/31/2024. Rika Visascan to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. And James Smith to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. To our Historic Preservation Commission, Sharon Wixon to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Lilian Mickey Lund to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Timothy Quinn to a term as Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. And Theodora Hackenberg to a term as Vice Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. To our Library Advisory Board, Timothy DeVoo to a term expiring January 31st, 2024, and to a term as Vice Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. Eva DeVoo to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Eddie Kukowski to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Bernice Harris to a term expiring January 31, 2024. Lauren Snare to a term expiring January 31, 2023. And Gary Johnson to a term as Chair expiring January 31, 2023. To our Municipal Property Corporation, Roger Swirejohn to a term expiring January 31st, 2023, and to a term as Vice Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. Leland Peterson to a term expiring January 31st, 2023, and to a term as Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. John Jones to a term expiring January 31st, 2023. And David Lecky to a term expiring January 31st, 2023. To our Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Reginald Martinez Jr. to a term expiring January 31st, 2024, and to a term as Vice Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. Catherine Mobby to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Gail Chivone to a term expiring January 31st, 2024, and to a term as Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. To our Personnel Board, Donna Brown to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Davida Soltar to a term as Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. Ray Strahl to a term as Vice Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. Our Planning Commission, Vern Crowe to a term expiring January 31st, 2024, and to a term as Vice Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. Ed Nyberg to a term as Vice Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. John Gears to a term expiring January 31st, 2024. Our Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, Police, Fire, and Police, Charles Eckerson, Charles Erickson, to a term as Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. And to our Risk Management Workers Compensation Trust Fund Board, Gary Deardorff for a term expiring 1/31/2025, and to a term as Chair expiring January 31st, 2023. And Raymond Johnson to a term as Vice Chair expiring January 31st, 2023, with apologies to anyone whose name I mispronounced.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone in the audience right now that is either a nominee or currently on a board or a commission? If you are, please stand up and be recognized. Or don't. Okay. So, Julie, they listened to you. Okay. So, we have a motion.
You're the only one.
And a second by Councilmember Tomachoff. The motion was made by Councilmember Turner. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's the ayes have it, do have it. That motion carries. Moving on to the Consent Agenda. Items number 3 through 18 items on the Consent Agenda are routine nature, or they've previously been studied by the City Council at a workshop session. They are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Do we have any speaker cards on any of the Consent Agenda items?
No, sir.
Thank you. It's my understanding that Councilmember Clark would like to have Item Number 9 voted separately. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 3 through 8 and 10 through 18?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve Consent Agenda Items 3 through 8 and 10 through 18.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve the Consent Items 3 through 8 and 10 through 18. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's the ayes have it, do have it. That motion carries. Moving on to Item Number 9. Can we have Item Number 9 introduced, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Goodman's Inc., doing business as Goodman's Interior Structures for refurbished furniture and related services.
Speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Clark?
Yes. Mayor, this item, as is typical of many of the bids and contracts, is a five-year contract. And as is my habit and pattern, I do not support five-year contracts.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve Item Number 9?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve Item Number 9, Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Goodman's Inc.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Turner. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, no, no, no. We've got to do a roll call. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion does carry. Moving on to Consent Resolutions. Items 19 through 24. Ms. Bauer, would you please read by number and title?
Item 19, Resolution Number R22-01, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, ratifying the acceptance of an award, number 15JCOPS-21-GG-03536-UHPX from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community-Oriented Policing Services, in the approximate amount of $500,000, under the funding opportunity entitled "2021 Fiscal Year 21 COPS Office Hiring Program Solicitation," on behalf of the Glendale Police Department, and authorizing the hiring of four additional police officers. Item 20, Resolution Number R22-02, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of the 2021 Multi-Jurisdictional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Item 21, Resolution Number R22-03, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, adjusting solid waste fees pursuant to Glendale City Code and setting forth effective dates. Item 22, Resolution Number R22-04, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an amended development agreement with RRB Beverage Operations, Inc. Item 23, Resolution Number R22-05, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement with Glendale, Arizona Historical Society for the use of city property located at 9802 North 59th Avenue, Glendale, Arizona. Item 24, Resolution Number R22-06, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona for the conversion of oft-left turn movements at signalized intersections to flashing yellow arrow operations. And that concludes the Consent Resolutions.
Do you have any speaker cards on any of those items?
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Items 19 through 24 on the Consent Resolution Agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve Consent Resolutions 19 through 24.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Clark to approve Items 19 through 24 on the Consent Resolution Agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's the ayes have it, do have it. Carries unanimous. Moving on to Bids and Contracts. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce Item 25, please?
Authorization to enter into an agreement with Industrial Automation Services, Inc., for Deserik, Cron, and Rexha Equipment, Parts, and Services.
Speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay. We have no presentation? All right. Councilmembers, do you have any questions on this item? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve Item 25?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Item Number 25.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve a recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. We'll conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Mayor, I will explain my vote on this and on the following bids and contracts. These are five-year contracts. Many of them are for ordinary services. The contracts are longer than our terms of office, and I do not support that practice. Thank you, Mayor. I vote nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce Item 26, please?
Award of RFP 21-52, and authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Arcadis US, Inc., to provide water meter replacement consultant services. And there are no speaker cards.
Okay. Any presentation? No. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve Item 26, Award of RFP 21-52.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff for the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce Item 27, please?
Authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with IAC LLC for AMA, Endress, and Hauser, and Kerr's Equipment, Parts, and Services. And there are no speaker cards.
Okay, very good. Presentation? No? Okay. Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move we approve and authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement with IAC LLC.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce Item 28?
Authorization to enter into Amendment Number 2 to Contract C-6423 with N. Harris Computer Corporation, Northstar Utility Solutions Division, to combine all maintenance and support for Northstar CIS, core automation suite, and maintenance for other associated modules under one agreement, and ratify expenditures. And there are no speaker cards.
Very good. Presentation? No? Any discussion from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve Item 28? Anybody?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, Mayor. I move we enter into the Amendment Number 2 with Contract Number C-6423.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Land Development Actions. We'll move on to just that. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce Item 29?
Resolution Number R22-07, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the general plan map of the city of Glendale, Arizona by approving General Plan Amendment GPA 21-07 for property located north of the northwest corner of 51st Avenue and Bell Road. Ordinance Number O22-01, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, amending the 51 Campana planned area development, ZON 18-15, for 7.44 acres located north of the northwest corner of 51st Avenue and Bell Road, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide staff report this evening is our interim planning manager, Tabitha Perry.
Okay. Hold on a second. Public hearing is now open on Item 29, Resolution R22-07, Ordinance Number 022-01. Tabitha.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council. The request before you this evening is seeking approval of a minor general plan amendment and a rezoning request to amend the existing 51 Campana PAD zoning ordinance. The subject site is located north of the northwest corner of 51st Avenue and Bell Road, which is approximately seven miles from City Hall. The current land use designation is planned commercial, and the applicant is seeking to amend the general plan to allow for 20 to 30 dwelling units to the acre for a high-density multifamily residential development. The current zoning is PAD, and within this existing PAD, it allows for 11 commercial pads on approximately 21 acres. The PAD land uses allows for office, emergency medical facility, retail, self-storage, and drive-through restaurants, as some of the land uses that are already permitted within the PAD. The proposed PAD amendment, which would be on approximately 7.4 acres of the overall site, is to allow for a land use for multifamily, maximum building height of 48 feet, lot coverage of 50%, and 60-foot setback from the residential use located north of the subject site property line. Here's an area map, just to provide additional context. The existing PAD is north of Bell Road, and it runs from 51st Avenue to 53rd Avenue. The area that is outlined in red is the approximately 74 acres that is before you this evening with the two requests. Here's a conceptual site plan that is rather busy, but the one thing I want to note from this site plan, that along the property line, there is an existing eight-foot wall that serves to be the buffering between the single-family residential to the north that is existing and the proposed multifamily that is before you within this proposed PAD. The conceptual landscape plan is intended to provide better context to what the applicant is proposing. The development is for a gated 204 multifamily community for residents aged 55 years of age or older. The subject site shows two access points. The main access point is off of 51st Avenue, and the secondary access point is located south of the property onto the existing private drive. The setbacks that are being proposed are appropriate for the site, but giving context to the single-family residential to the north. The areas that are indicated have setbacks ranging from 60 to 70 feet. And then this single-story building shows a setback at approximately 55 feet. The remainder of the building footprint is located approximately 170 feet from the property line, and that building itself is four stories. The applicant is proposing appropriate amenities for the development as well, to include a dog yard, a pickleball court, a garden area, a lap pool, outdoor kitchen and dining area, and additional amenities that are not outlined on the screen. This case was heard before Planning Commission on December 2, in which there were no one there who spoke in opposition. The applicant did also complete the outreach process, in which there were no opposition of the proposal when it was presented to the neighborhood. Planning Commission gave a recommendation to approve the general plan request as written, and also a recommendation for approval of the rezoning case, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I got one, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Are, you said there was a four-story building here? And how are those facing the neighborhood? The, I assume they're apartments. Are they, do they have balconies that face out over the neighborhood out? How is that done?
Okay. Mayor and council member, the application is still under review for design review, so I can't really speak to how those balconies are going to be facing as of right now. But the point that I was trying to show, that the applicant did put a lot of thought in trying to have enough buffering from the single-family residential. So, for the areas that are, the building footprint that is facing protruding a little closer to the north property line at a minimum, they are showing the 60-foot setback. And then along that property line, they are proposing lush landscaping to provide additional enhancement to the buffering to the single-family residential to the north.
Well, if, on a four-story building, 60 feet isn't a whole lot of space. And so, my concern, you said there was no opposition. Did members of the community come out during the community outreach meeting?
Mayor, council members, so first, the applicant had an informal virtual meeting, in which individual came just to hear about the proposal, but there was no concerns to the proposal. And then they had a second formal virtual neighborhood meeting, like so, there was no oppositions to the proposal, just general questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on Item 29, Resolution R22-07?
Yes, Mayor. I move we adopt Resolution Number R22-07.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion on Item 29, Ordinance 022-01?
Yes, Mayor. I move we adopt Ordinance Number 022-0, I'm sorry, O22-01.
Second. You say potato, I say potato. Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimous. Could you please introduce item 30?
Ordinance Number O22-02, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Section 9-471, Arizona revised statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located at the southeast corner of Glendale Avenue and Alsop Avenue in the city of Glendale, consisting of approximately 146 acres, to be known as Annexation Area Number 234, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Public hearing is now open on item number 30, Ordinance 022-02. Tabitha.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this is an item that was brought before you in workshop back on October the 26th, in which council gave a consensus to proceed forward with the annexation request. The request is to annex approximately 146 acres into the city limits, and the property is located at the southeast corner of Glendale and Alsop Avenues. Currently, the property is within the county jurisdiction, and the zoning is RU43, which would allow for a single-family residence. Upon the completion of adoption of the annexation, we would apply the city's most compatible zoning, which would be the RR45, which also would allow for a single-family residence. The applicant has submitted and is processing a rezoning application to rezone the site from the RR45 to a PAD planned area development to allow for a mixed-use development, not consisting of any type of residential land use. The rezoning application will not be presented before you this evening, but it is tentatively scheduled to come back before you on January the 25th. And with that, here's the annexation map, just to give context to where the property is located. During the blank petition process on December the 14th, there was no one who spoke before council in opposition of the proposed annexation. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item 30, Ordinance 022-02?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt Ordinance Number 022-02.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 31, Ordinance 022-03?
Ordinance Number O22-03, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Section 9-471, Arizona revised statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located at the northwest corner of Glendale Avenue and the 115th Avenue alignment in the city of Glendale, consisting of approximately five acres, to be known as Annexation Area Number 232, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Okay. Public hearing is now open on item 31, Ordinance 022-3. Ms. Perry.
Mayor and council, this is a request for the final adoption of an annexation request to annex five acres into the city's limits. The property is located northwest of Glendale Avenue and the 115th Avenue alignment. The property is currently in the county with a zoning of RU43. Once again, that allows for a single-family residence. And upon the annexation, the city would apply the most compatible zoning district, which would be the RR45, which also would allow for the single-family residence. It is the intent of the applicant to process a rezoning application to rezone the property from the RR45 to a rezoning classification of M2, which is for a heavy industrial. For context purposes, here's the annexation map. The item was presented before City Council on a blank petition on December the 14th, and like so, there was no one who spoke in opposition of the proposed annexation. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions from this council? Hearing none. Any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion for item 31, Ordinance 022-03?
Yes, Mayor. I move that we pass and adopt Ordinance Number 022-03.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from Councilmember Tomachov for the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimous. Moving on to ordinances, Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 32, Ordinance 022-04?
Ordinance Number O22-04, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of two power distribution easements in favor of Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District at Heroes Regional Park Lake, located at 6075 North 83rd Avenue, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council, here provides staff report this evening is our Glendale Principal Engineer, Jamie Chapin.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council members. With this action, the city will be granting two power distribution easements to SRP so that they may bring power to the facilities at Heroes Regional Park Lake. Staff is recommending granting the easements so that SRP may maintain and operate their facilities in support of this city facility. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion on item 32, Ordinance 022-04?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt Ordinance Number 022-04.
Second.
Okay, there we go. I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from Councilmember Tomachov for the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 33, Ordinance 022-05?
Ordinance Number O22-05, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance and execution of a drainage easement from the Flood Control District of Maricopa County, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor and council members, with this request, the Flood Control District is granting the city an easement to maintain a drainage basin adjacent to Ballpark Boulevard. Staff is recommending accepting this easement so that we may access and maintain these facilities in support of the roadway. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Can I get a motion on item 33, Ordinance 022-05?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we adopt and approve on item number 33, Ordinance Number O22-05.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from Councilmember Tomachov for the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 34, Ordinance 022-06?
Ordinance Number O22-06, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of a special warranty deed conveying the detention basin parcel located at 15249 North 59th Avenue to Arizona Christian University, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor and council, this action is actually very positive for the city and ACU as well. And I'd like to take a minute to explain what it... This parcel acts as a surge basin, and it was constructed as part of the 59th Avenue Storm Drain Project years ago. And the way it works is the storm drain decreases in size downstream of the basin. So in a very extreme storm event, the water would back up in the storm drain pipe and then surge into this basin. So you can imagine this would happen on a very rare occasion. So when ACU approached the city and asked if we would be interested in conveying the basin to them to support their recreation programs, we really saw this as a win-win. So now this area can serve multipurpose. It can be utilized where before it really was not utilized, but the city had to maintain it for these rare occasions. So ACU will be taking over the property, also taking over the maintenance, but they will maintain the drainage easement. And so we will still, if that does ever occur, that we will still operate in the manner that it was intended. So staff is recommending conveying this 1.88 parcel of land to Arizona Christian University. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion on item 34, Ordinance 022-06? Anybody?
Okay, I'll do it.
Go ahead.
Mr. Melner.
I move that we adopt item number 34, Ordinance O22-06.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Clark to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimous. Could you introduce item 35, Ordinance 022-07, please, for us?
Ordinance Number O22-07, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the city manager and city clerk to execute and file an airport land lease agreement with Glendale Aero Services, Inc. for certain property at the Glendale Municipal Airport.
Mayor, members of the council, here provides staff report this evening is interim Transportation Director, Daniel Clevenger.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a request for City Council to adopt an ordinance to allow the city manager and city clerk to execute and file an airport land lease agreement with Glendale Aero Services, Incorporated, for the development of a hangar facility on vacant ramp space at the Glendale Municipal Airport. This development is... The development site is a 48,600-square-foot parcel upon which a 100-foot-by-100-foot hangar will be constructed. The hangar will be large enough to house multiple larger corporate jet aircraft. The construction term of this lease is 24 months from the effective date. The term of the land lease is 20 years with three different options for renewal. The building will become city property after the lease term. That's the end of my presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion on item 35, Number 022-07?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 35, Ordinance Number O22-07.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Aldama, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 36, Ordinance 022-08?
Ordinance Number O22-08, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, one, authorizing the execution and delivery of a purchase agreement, a trust agreement, an escrow agent agreement, a continuing disclosure undertaking, a bank solicitor agreement, and an obligation purchase contract; two, approving the sale, execution, and delivery of water and sewer revenue refunding obligations in one or more series in order to refund water and sewer tax revenue obligations previously delivered to finance improvements of the city's water and sewer system; three, pledging certain water and sewer system revenues imposed or received by the city to the payment of such obligations; four, delegating to an authorized officer of the city the limited authority to designate by series the final principal amount, maturities, interest rates, and other matters with respect to such obligations; and five, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this ordinance, including the execution of certain documents and the distribution of a preliminary official statement and an official statement.
Mayor, members of the council, here provides staff report this evening is Leta Camacho, our Director of Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item is a request for City Council to adopt an ordinance authorizing the Assistant City Manager or Chief Financial Officer to execute documents and take the necessary actions to refinance a portion of the City of Glendale water and sewer revenue obligations with the sale and issuance of City of Glendale water and sewer revenue refunding obligations and pledge water and sewer revenues toward the refunding obligation. Based on an analysis by RVC, the water and sewer revenue bonds, Series 2012, in a par amount available to refinance of $39,030,000, could currently provide debt service savings through a refinancing. Under bond market conditions as of December 2021, the debt service savings were estimated to be $5.1 million on a present value basis over the term of the obligations. That concludes my presentation. Representatives from RVC are here and available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Hearing none. I guess they don't need to test away. Is there a motion on item 36, Ordinance 022-08?
Yes, Mayor. I move we adopt Ordinance Number O22-08.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Tomachov, second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimous. Moving on to new business. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 38?
Ordinance Number O22-09, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an amendment to an navigation and noise easement with Madamie Homes, Arizona Corporation, in order to relocate irrigation facilities to complete right-of-way improvements along 107th Avenue.
Mayor and council, before you this evening is an amendment to the navigation easement that the City of Glendale required when Madamie was going to be constructing homes. As you may recall, to ensure and protect the operations at our general municipal airport, we required them to dedicate a navigation and noise easement to us. As the project is nearing completion, there's improvements to 107th Avenue that require an existing irrigation line to be relocated. The line is owned by the United States government, and so we need to amend the navigation and noise easement so that they can relocate the existing irrigation line. I ask for your approval, and I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion for item 38?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 38, Ordinance Number O22-09.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Aldama, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimous. Okay. Item 37.
Council selection and Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, here's Brent Spatterd.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is an opportunity for the council to appoint your selection as Vice Mayor. The city charter requires this body to select one member from the City Council to serve in this capacity. That individual serves at the pleasure of the City Council. Your council guidelines specify that the appointment will be made by a majority vote of the council, and that individual will serve as Vice Mayor for a year term, essentially from January to January. Mayor, with that, I would turn it back over to the council for that selection.
Thank you. Well, and again, I said earlier, and I'd like to repeat it, I would like to thank Vice Mayor Hugh as he completes his term as our Vice Mayor. I greatly appreciate him, everything he's done. And this year, with my heart attack that I had, and I did miss some meetings, he stepped up and ran a meeting, and the city continued on very professionally. So, and your support, Vice Mayor, and your friendship means an awful lot to me. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You almost gave me a heart attack, wouldn't you? Thanks, Mayor. It's my privilege. I move that we appoint Jamie Aldama as our Vice Mayor.
Second. Okay.
Bart, second.
Okay, um, okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, we have to respond on that. Okay.
We vote.
Yeah, I, I was a little caught up. Okay. All right, well, so with that, I have a motion from Vice Mayor. I have a second from Councilmember Turner to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
May, if I may, pass.
You may. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Mayor, I explain my vote.
Certainly.
Although I personally admire Councilmember Aldama, there are unresolved issues that preclude me from voting for him for Vice Mayor, so I vote nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I also have some unresolved underlying issues that I have made Councilmember Aldama and this body aware of, and while I do greatly admire Councilmember Aldama, I am not going to be able to support his nomination, and I vote nay.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair, I'm gonna hold the chair part. Councilmember Aldama, you're up. You can't pass twice.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the motion does carry. Congratulations to our new Vice Mayor, Councilmember Aldama. Okay, so with that said, council comments and suggestions, we'll start off with the new Vice Mayor, Councilmember Aldama. Have you any?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I want to also thank Vice Mayor Hugh for your service the past year. As, as the Vice Mayor, you, you stepped up and you've done an excellent job. Thank you, sir. I admire you for, for your service. I want to thank the, the Mayor and the council members who supported my appointment today to the Vice Mayor. It's an absolute honor and a privilege to serve as a council member, let alone be appointed by my colleagues who I work with side by side every single day to be the Vice Mayor. I assure you that I will continue to serve as this leader of the Alcatel district, whether I'm the Vice Mayor or the council member. At this point, I'm the Vice Mayor, and I can't thank you enough, and I am extremely honored, and, and it's, it's just a great feeling to work with this council. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would echo the comments of the previous speaker. Thank you, Councilmember Hugh, for your service as Vice Mayor. You've done an excellent job, and we all are, are grateful for your stepping into the breach when needed. I, I would like to invite all Glendale residents on Thursday, January 13th, that's this coming Thursday, two days away, at 2:30 in the afternoon, to come to the grand opening celebration for Heroes Lake. It will be the second fishing lake in the city of Glendale. It is a long-awaited amenity for Heroes Park, and I couldn't be happier to make this announcement. So please do plan on, on joining us to celebrate at 2:30 PM on this Thursday. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hugh?
Yeah, I, well, congratulations to our new Vice Mayor and, and council members. I enjoyed serving as Vice Mayor, and I'll be at Heroes Lake. Thanks, Joyce.
Councilmember Melner?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of things. I want, also want to thank Vice Mayor Hugh, who I've known for, I don't even know how long.
Long time.
Long, long time for serving as Vice Mayor, so, especially in, you know, difficult circumstances, so thank you for that. Congratulations, Councilmember Clark. I am very excited to see your face on Thursday at the opening of Heroes Park Lake. And a couple of other things I wanted to mention. I wanted to recognize the passing of Mickey Lund. I'm, probably all of us are aware, maybe obviously Councilmember Clark was not aware, I can tell by her face. Mickey Lund passed away on Sunday, and, and after apparently a short battle with cancer. I think everybody in this room knows what a, what a wonderful man he was.
Olsen.
Mickey Olsen, I'm sorry, Mickey Olsen.
Mickey Lund's gonna be very surprised.
I apologize to Mickey Lund. Mickey Olsen. Wildlife World Zoo. I was really stunned when I saw that. I mean, I, I know we all knew the man. He was a won, just a wonderful man, a great community guy. Start, really had an idea in his mind that he literally transformed into something fantastic. So my condolences to his family and to the community. I mean, he's a real loss to our community. And secondly, I want to thank Tony Eskameo. Tony Eskameo, I don't believe is a Glendale resident, but he has come to the rescue of the American flag on top of the, the mountain at Arrowhead Point. He, you know, has wanted to do it for a long time. The flag, a couple of times, has fallen into disrepair, and Mr. Eskameo has taken it upon himself to maintain the flag, but also to purchase the flags out of his own money. So, which I commend him for, and I'm so appreciative, so I want to thank, publicly thank Tony Eskameo. We really appreciate you doing that. It means, I, I get calls, as soon as there's something wrong with the flag, people start calling. People really, really want the flag to be maintained, and he's doing that. So thank you very much to Tony.
Okay, Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to acknowledge and appreciate Vice Mayor Hugh's service to us as Vice Mayor, and he's done a wonderful job, but why wouldn't he? He's had plenty of practice.
Thank you.
I would like to congratulate Councilmember Aldama on his election to Vice Mayor. And yes, it is very sad about Mickey Olsen's passing. A fine person in the, what an inspiration to have had a dream, start small, pursue it forever, stay a great wholesome generous person the whole time. What a legacy to leave behind. We should all be that fortunate. And then lastly, I would like to invite everyone, Glendale residents or others within the sound of my voice, to attend the 58th Annual Glendale Arts Council Juried Art Show. Fifty-eight years, all volunteers, started down here in Murphy Park, and it now is out at the, the Fruit Packing House Gallery at Swallow Ranch Park. It's open daily from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM through the end of January. Admission is free. All of the arts for sale, but you're under no obligation. Proceeds from the sale of art. Twenty-five percent goes back to the Arts Council. They use the money to provide scholarships for art students at Glendale Community College and to provide grants for art programs in our community and art supplies in our classrooms.